So Commissioner Five, for whatever reason, the background on the that I'm using, when we look at it on horizons, it is white. But when I bring it up on my screen, it's apparently defined as transparent. So it shows up as black. I don't know.
Weird.
Yeah.
Wow. Let me try if it does the same for me. Should I try?
Can't hurt. I'll only stand to learn more. Maybe I have a setting I don't understand.
Same thing for me. Yeah, no, I don't think it's you.
I think I'll pick another one.
Yeah, me too. I feel like I'm in the twilight zone.
Okay. Oops, got one more minute to go. There we go. Clerk Moss, are we ready?
We are live and back in public session, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, welcome back, everyone, from our shortened lunch break. We're going to pick back up with an item that had been moved off of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda in your packet, it was listed as Item 15, Consideration of Adopting Policy 317, COVID-19 Vaccination Mandate for Healthcare Workers, Teachers, and School Staff. I believe this was an item that we talked about in work session. Was that just last week, Mr. Carr?
No, Chair, I believe it was two weeks ago, and you actually talked about it in a work session, and then you passed a policy at the regular business meeting on September 7th. And then we discovered that there are a few employees in the county who are considered education workers. I think the number is six, but it's certainly around 10. And so the policy only covered healthcare workers, and we wanted to extend it. Also, we inadvertently failed to put a resolution and order in the packet on September 7th. So the Board's action, which requires a resolution and order, should have one. So this completes the action, extends the policy to education workers, and ratifies all actions, all steps that have been taken between September 7th and today to implement the policy the Board approved on September 7th.
All righty. There it is. Okay. So Commissioners, Commissioner Willie, are you going to join us on screen? Can't really tell if he's still if he's really there or if he's not there. I'm just trying to check to see if all Commissioners... There he is. I just wanted to check before asking for a motion if everyone is clear and had a chance to check out this resolution and order.
Madam Chair, can I make my... Maybe it will make this fairly simple. I asked to have it pulled because I still have concerns. I knew there were four of her on one side, I was on the other.
Yeah.
And my arguments are simply the same as they were before. We keep telling everybody we're a employer of choice, and yet we have a large percentage of our population who aren't vaccinated. I'm a big, big, big proponent of vaccinations. What I was hoping, even though it's a governor, I don't like to fight necessarily with those who dictate to us, but it would seem reasonable to me that we provide some other alternatives such as testing, and we need to find the funds to do that, much as they're doing in schools. It also seems to me that it's a pretty punitive action to tell somebody that has worked for us for long periods of time, you get vaccinated by October 18th, or at least your first one, or say goodbye to your job at Washington County. That's really not the message I've heard, as I told you, I've given lots of constituents calls, heard from a number of people who feel that if there's any alternative, it would be nice, instead of just simply saying, "Get vaccinated or you're fired on October the 19th." That's really not a good message. And so I was hopeful that we could find some alternatives such as at least testing and giving other alternatives such as maybe they'd be placed in a different position that they would not be in contact. So that's my comments. That's it in a nutshell.
Well, I believe you're being consistent with the prior action on this.
That's all I'm doing.
Yep. So Commissioners, I would ask if we have a motion to amend and adopt Policy 317, COVID-19 Vaccination Mandate for Healthcare Workers, Teachers, and Second Staff through the resolution and order in our packet today. Motion from Commissioner Treese. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Five. I'd like to open it for any questions or comments before we have a vote. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
So I guess this is a question to either Tanya or Tom. Is it possible that we can modify these guidelines to allow for testing rather than them leaving the employment?
As you recall, Commissioner Willie, the state OHA originally had a testing alternative, and a lot of local governments or a lot of people suggested that that was very costly and expensive, and that they withdrew it. So under the mandate that we're required to comply with by the state, we cannot offer a testing alternative for this policy.
Okay.
Sorry, I hit the wrong button. Did any other Commissioners want to ask any questions or make comment? I just will say for myself then that, as one of five, that this is in line with what we are being required to do to implement this policy following the state requirement placed on us. This only applies to those employees under our service that are healthcare workers, teachers, and school staff. This is not an all-employee vaccination requirement today per through this policy 317. And as mentioned, we do have a very high rate of vaccinations here in our employee base with a maximum of just approximately 525 out of the over 2,300 in our employ. So seeing no other comments from any Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Those opposed, thank you, Commissioner. The motion carries four to one. And then Commissioner Rogers let us know that he will need to depart in a few minutes to take care of some personal business. The next item on our action agenda is regarding the Major Street Transportation Improvement Program for fiscal year '23 through '28, the Funding Allocation Process Work Plan. So at this juncture, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Roberts for a staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know, again, you're a little bit behind schedule, and so we do have a presentation that we were planning to run through today. So just a point of order, we can try to move through fairly quickly through that, and then I'll just kick us off with a few comments, and then Chris Duffabach and Erin Wardell will run through the presentation. So we have before you, as you noted, the MSTIP 2328 Funding Allocation Work Plan. As you'll recall, we brought this before you two weeks ago on September 7th for adoption, and the Board unanimously requested that we delay for two weeks, asked the Washington County Coordinating Committee to review the work plan and provide a recommendation on that. So I'm pleased to report on September 13th, the Washington County Coordinating Committee, WCCC, unanimously recommended Board approval of the work plan. They did request some clarifications in the work plan document, and so the work plan that's before you today incorporates some language that I think just simply clarified what was the intent in the original document anyway, that we would be checking in with both the WCCC and the Board of Commissioners at some of the key juncture points. And the WCCC specifically was interested in being able to weigh in on the definition of equity and how that would be applied, how the evaluation metrics were determined and applied. And there was a specific question raised about how the natural environment provisions would be incorporated as a desired outcome. And so again, as I mentioned, that was really sort of the intention in our work plan, but we have made some language changes to help clarify that. In addition, just due to some delays in getting the work plan adopted and in just making sure that we would have adequate time to hopefully provide the number of check-ins that we're anticipating for both the Coordinating Committee and the Board of Commissioners, we have pushed out the ultimate due date, if you will, for the funding allocation process by two months to November 2022, just to ensure that we aren't rushing ourselves too much to make sure that we do have a deliberative process along the way. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris Duffabach, and she'll do the first part of the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Stephen. That was a good catch-up introduction. So next slide, please. So what we will cover, what we'd like to cover today is just review the proposed Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program Funding Allocation Process Work Plan for the revenue that we estimate to be collected between 2023 and 2028. We will share the WCC comments and recommendation, a little bit more Stephen introduced. And in the end, we'd like to seek your approval of the work plans we can get going on the rest of the work. Next slide. Just to recap, the role of Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program Funding Allocation is one step among many in getting projects implemented. First starts with identifying the needs of our transportation system and getting public input on those in adopted plans. The second is the step we're in, which is of all of those, which one do we prioritize for the revenue that we can forecast now? And then that is followed with the more detailed project design work, where we get into a lot of specifics about what the road looks like and trees and bike lanes, very detailed. And then we get into the construction phase. So this is just one step along the process of developing the transportation system. Next slide. So just a reminder for everyone that this is Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, and it has, it's based using countywide property taxes and focused on improving our major roads. It's been a pay-as-you-go approach, and that's why we're forecasting the revenue to allocate. It's been around since 1986 with over 150 projects funded at more than $900 million, not adjusting for the cost of the dollar since 1986. The projects are identified in this sort of continuous pipeline about every five-year cycles, and the projects have, go through a process of being recommended by the Washington County Coordinating Committee with the final action by you at the Board of Commissioners. The next slide. Again, this is really successful program, dates back to 1986 with three serial levies. And then in 1997, the levy rate was reduced, became part of the countywide property tax due to changes in state requirements. And since then, the county commissioners have consistently dedicated funding for this very important program. And the success has really shown in, as Washington County has grown so much since 1986, these investments really have helped to keep up with that fast growth. All right, the next, and the next, and the next cycle is a continuation of this process. The next cycle, it will, again, target, get that pipeline ready for revenue as we estimate through from '23 to '28. I think the next, the next, the next slide is just, I'm going to cover the the four major milestones and then turn it over to Erin Wardell, who's going to walk you through each of the various specific tasks. But I think to begin with, this work plan is really building on a process that's used before, which is we're developing, with the first milestone being developing the work plan and our public engagement plan, and we're including an equity framework component as this part of this early work. The second milestone is really to seek project ideas from solicitations from the cities and from you for candidates that would then would then be evaluated in Milestone Three. Milestone Two will include various steps Erin will talk about, about how to begin to identify the, refine evaluation metrics, confirm the eligibility criteria, and get community input on what's most important. And I can tell you, kind of as a preview for a later slide, is that as we've been out talking with the Washington County Coordinating Committee members and the city councils, there is no shortage already of ideas for projects to fund. So Milestone Three is where we have the task of getting ready to take the big list to, a list, we find it in ways to send comments out for public comment. And we include also the programmatic elements. You're most familiar with the Opportunity Fund that we've used, that is used as local match for grants. So this is the whole MISTIP package. So that will be the next major milestone to get public input on our prioritized list. And then the fourth one is really just to wrap this up with the WCC recommendation, which is part of all of this. As on a project list, it refinements to the programmatic elements, when if you look back since 1986, those have been tweaked a little bit over time. And then we're also recommending that we refresh our administrative policies. So that would be the final action. So those are, I think this thing to remember is that there are four major milestones. The rest is all the different steps to get there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin to walk through those additional steps.
Thank you, Chris. My name is Erin Wardell. I'm the principal transportation planner. And I'll be talking through some of the more frequent check-in points with the Washington County Coordinating Committee and the Board of County Commissioners for decisions as we go through this process. So Chris just laid out those four major milestones. You can see them at the top of the slide. We're anticipating that we'll be back before you on about a monthly basis and before the WCCC as well. And these are what we'll be talking about at those check-ins. Here we are, talking about the WCCC recommendation and asking for your approval of the work plan. In October and November, we will be reviewing our public outreach plan and equity framework. We will then ask for your direction to begin our public engagement around the values and outcomes of the program. In January, we'll have the opportunity to review the proposed eligibility criteria and evaluation metrics, and then begin to review the preliminary revenue forecast for the program because that will inform our ultimate project selection. In February, we will be asking for the Board to direct us to release the project solicitation packet. That's the project applications that we'll be asking for from the cities of Washington County as well as from the county. In April, we'll be ready to review the proposed programmatic allocation. As Chris just said, the programs are the MISTIP Opportunity Fund. We also have our Rural Bridge Program and some Intelligent Transportation System Funds. So we'll be talking about if those are the correct programs for this cycle and the funding amounts for them. In June, we will be ready to ask you for direction to begin engagement around the project list and the program allocations, and we'll be going out for a big public conversation about those at that time. In August, we'll be reviewing the proposed administrative procedures. And then in November, we'll be back to ask for you to adopt the full MISTIP program package. So there's going to be a lot of conversation. And of course, in advance of each of the Board decision points, we'll be going through the Washington County Coordinating Committee. Next slide, please. And that brings us a little bit more to the decision-making process. So this slide shows this process of technical review and recommendation that we'll be following throughout the next year or so. We are proposing the formation of a technical work group, and you can see that in here before the WCCC's Transportation Advisory Committee. The intent of that technical work group is really to be a subset of the TAC members or their designee. They'll be meeting three times through the process specifically to talk about the evaluation criteria that we'll be using. And we're using subject matter experts from our Public Health Department, Clean Water Services, and Housing, for example, to help augment our understanding of evaluation criteria. So that's a very special step for the evaluation piece of this. All of the other decisions and the evaluation criteria as well will go through the WCCC TAC, the Full Tax Review, for recommendation to the Coordinating Committee, which will be asked to make a recommendation to the Board, and then the Board makes the ultimate decision on the package. Next slide, please. We are proposing an expanded public outreach approach as a part of our MISTIP program. We are hiring a consultant as a staff extension to help us create our equity framework and to conduct our engagement with historically excluded communities. I can tell you that we are working on negotiations right now with our selected consultant, who is John Albell, with Espousal Strategies, and then a number of sub consultants. So we're just kicking that off and working on getting towards an agreed-upon contract. We'll have these two major community outreach phases. The first will be this fall, where we ask people about their values for the transportation system and the outcomes they'd like to see from this program. And then in the spring, we'll be asking them about what projects and programs are their priorities. We'll be doing ongoing engagement throughout the process with already established committees. We're working closely with our city partners. Part of our conversations with cities over the past two months have been, how can we effectively work through your existing equity staff and committees? Because we want to be able to develop that partnership. And then we'll be doing regular updates to city councils and organizations as requested. Next slide. So we've held engagements, a number of different engagement opportunities with the cities. We've been before the Washington County Coordinating Committee with the work plan in May and then in September. Since we did not have an August meeting of the WCCC, but we wanted the opportunity to review the work plan, we offered individual briefings to WCCC members, and many of them took us up on that. So we held individual briefings with the members from the cities of Beaverton, Cornelius, Hillsborough, North Plains, Sherwood, Tigard, and Toowallaton. And we briefed Wilsonville staff without their WCCC member. We also have briefed a number of city councils, and we have others scheduled coming up. So we've briefed Beaverton, Forest Grove, Hillsborough's Transportation Committee, which is a subset of their city council, and King City. We have upcoming council briefings with Cornelius, Sherwood, Tigard, and Toowallaton. And these have been really great conversations. We've learned a lot, we've heard a lot, and we've made some of those changes in the work plan that you see today. Next slide. So these next slides go through some of the feedback that we've heard through the briefings that we've held with your Board as well as with the WCCC and the members. So feedback we've heard from the Board in previous briefings have been support for the additional engagement, for our outline of frequent check-ins, a lot of support for keeping the focus on the major streets part of the program, support for our more transparent and defined project solicitation packet and process, support for framing the investments around these big outcomes that we've talked about, support for the expanded technical committee subject matter expert expertise, and then to continue to seek recommendations from WCCC throughout the process. Next slide. Your Board did ask for some expanded clarifications and revisions as we go through the process. So some interest in expanding the programmatic allocations or adding funding, particularly for the Opportunity Fund, which has been very, very popular and has brought a lot of money into the county. We've been asked to work on identifying our system gaps and connectivity needs to help inform the projects that are proposed. We've been asked to more explicitly include climate impacts and resiliency and some of our environmental evaluation metrics to provide more information about the potential revenue and project delivery timelines. We've heard clearly from the Board that you want to have input on that equity framework and their values, and so we're bringing that back to you next month. We also heard support for using the public input on the project priorities and avoiding any sort of popularity contest, continue to distribute the money around the county, and then to provide regular updates on what we're hearing from these conversations we're having with the community and with the other elected bodies. And we are working on putting together what we're hearing. Next slide. From our Washington County Coordinating Committee briefings, we have heard a lot of support for the program overall. People are very pleased with this program. We've built a lot of great projects, and there's a lot of support for this ongoing partnership. We have heard support for increasing our engagement directly with city councils as well as for working through their existing equity committees, equity staff, working with chambers of commerce, school districts, and some other groups who we can continue to reach out to. We've heard a lot of support for that continued distribution countywide of the funds, support for expanding our technical committee with those subject matter experts, and then a lot of support for continuation of the MISTIP Opportunity Fund and potentially for increasing that funding as well. Next slide. We have heard requests for some clarifications or revisions from these briefings as well. The first of those is to conduct a review of the system of countywide interest map and make sure that it's complete and there's nothing we need to add to it. So we're working on that right now with the WCCC TAC. We'll be talking with them about that in more detail at their next meeting, and then bring that back to WCCC and then to the Board. We have heard some clarification for broadening some of the project categories and what types of projects could be funded. We've heard some interest in prioritizing multimodal elements of the program as well. We've heard, we've heard a request for more information about what equity means and how equity will be incorporated in this process. And that's something we'll be working for, or working towards once we have our consultant under contract and can actually start developing that equity framework. And then support for honoring our existing commitments and building the projects that we've already selected, which of course is always our intent. We're just allocating the next phase of funding. We'll still keep building the previous projects. Next slide. So common themes from all of these briefings. People already know or have a pretty good idea of what they're going to ask for, and we know that our requests will exceed available funding. So this is going to be a really interesting process to go through and select the projects that we'll be funding. Next slide. So with this, I'm going to turn it back over to Chris to talk about the WCCC meeting last week.
Right, thank you. So we had a good discussion with WCC on the 13th of September, and the WCC unanimously recommended Board approval of the work plan, conditioned on making sure that they would be engaged, we would seek their recommendations, particularly with more effort on key decision points, specifically definition of equity and how it is applied. And we had, we had discussion, you know, many of them have their own equity committees, and so there's a lot of experience they want to bring as well to the table on that one. Definition, application of evaluation metrics. I think in the past, there hasn't been a lot of, though we've always done these evaluation measures in terms of ranking. There's a lot more interest now and better understanding what those measures are, and having a chance to review and discuss them. So we folded that into the work plan and more explicitly. And then definition of a natural environment as a desired outcome. And then again, these desired outcomes are, provide some way to talk about the success of the MISTIP program rather than simply that a most of projects are dollars spent. Talks about, allows us to talk about them in terms of what we're, what the, what the investments are achieving. And natural environment is a pretty broad category, and rightly so. I think we would need some more time to figure out what we need, particularly as climate, resiliency, and some other things get folded into that definition. So that was there, comments and recommendations. And then, next slide. So really, we are just here to see about concerns or questions you have about the work plan, or are there any additional changes you'd like us to make? And do you support approval of the work plan? And then, following that, it with, if with your approval, we would then, if you say the next slide, I think, and I'll come back to. I think, and I'll come back to this. Yeah, so what the approval today will allow us to do is we will, we've started scheduling, penciling in at least some board briefing times and trying to pin those dates down in your really full agendas. So we will proceed with that. I can't promise they won't move around from time to time, but we will get those pinned down. We'll be immediately working on our public outreach and equity frameworks. We can get going on that. And continuing to share our work plan with city councils, and then prepare for our next initial fall outreach and initial discussions, the countywide significance map, evaluation criteria. And we're also been working on some of those needs, identified needs, like, you know, gaps in our system. So we will also be working on background information to share to help frame, help people think about priorities. So if you go back, Kevin, back one slide, I'll leave that on the questions, and then hope anything, we're here to answer questions. And I know Commissioner Rogers was at the WCC meeting.
So commissioners, do you have any questions on the work plan or comments for changes? Commissioner Rogers is already unmuted.
Thank you, and thank you, Chris and Stephen. There were concerns, and you've addressed those appropriately so. And so I certainly appreciate that. That was, the cities wanted to be heard, they were heard, and you addressed them. So I'm happy to voice my approval as well.
Commissioner Willie.
Yeah. I didn't know if I was muted or not. Yeah, I wanted to echo that. I really appreciate the fact that Stephen and Chris stepped up and made time in their schedules to attend the WCCC for their briefings. And I was also at that meeting, and it was, it was a very good meeting, lots of good dialogue and interaction. I do have one question on Slide 14, and it's under potential clarifications and revisions. So the System of Countywide Interest Map, you're saying potentially adding major streets and other connected facilities. So currently, those aren't on the System of Countywide Interest Map, or is there going to be a change there?
Aaron can talk about this more detail, but there are two cities have updated their TSPs, something that wasn't a collector now is, or maybe an arterial. Aaron, do you want to add anything to that? There's, it's a little bit clarification. As far as we know, there's only two segments that may be added with the planning that's gone on since 2016, since this was last updated.
Sure, just to add, the map was initially intended to be all arterials in the county as well as collectors that serve more of a regional type of function. So it's an opportunity for the cities to take a look and make sure that it still reflects their plans. We've heard from two cities that they have interest in adding two collector facilities to that map or making sure they're reflected on the map. So that's the conversation that we're having with the cities now, just making sure that we have everything they'd like to add.
Well, and I like those four bullet points to, I guess, so the System of Countywide Interest Map would be kind of all-inclusive of these different areas and certainly be actually a reflection of the countywide interest. So I would certainly agree with that. And Aaron, thank you very much. I didn't mean to exclude you from the appreciation for Stephen and Chris, because you've always been a part of this tag team as well. So thank you, all three of you. And I agree with Roy. I appreciate all your work, and I'll be certainly supportive of this plan.
Seeing none, is there, oh, sorry. Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the MISTIP fiscal year 2328 Funding Allocation Process Work Plan? Motion from Commissioner Rogers, a second from Commissioner Willie. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Anybody opposed? No, the motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our next action agenda item. This is with regard to an emergency ordinance, or in the alternate, the first reading of a county ordinance 880, which would extend the current 60-day protection period from Senate Bill 278 of 2021 to 90 days. So first, why don't we have a staff report?
Chair, good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. That's actually the perfect place to start. Clerk Moss, if you could promote Jenny Proctor, because she will be presenting with me today. In addition, even though it's not listed on this slide, I do want to express appreciation to county council, government relations, Latricia Tillman, our Chief Equity Officer, as well as our LUT staff who helped gather some data, Erin Wordell and Ken Renter for putting, helping provide information to put today's presentation together. So let's start with the purpose. So the purpose of the discussion today is to share an update of the Washington County and the State of Oregon dispersment of emergency rental assistance programs. Today's discussion will include a scope of the challenges, steps staff have taken to address these challenges, and then policy options for the board to discuss. And the policy options are around extension of the current 60-day protection for renters to 90 days, who have applications in progress for the emergency rental assistance program. So with that, next slide, please, and I will transition this to Jenny Proctor.
Thank you. Could I just make sure you can hear me? Great, okay. Thank you, Ms. Angie, Chair Harrington, commissioners, good afternoon. With Oregon's eviction moratorium ending as of June 30th, and the federal eviction moratorium that was enacted by the Centers for Disease Control that was struck down by the Supreme Court in August, renters in Washington County are now facing evictions. Next slide, please. Though evictions are now allowed to move forward, assistance is available for income-qualified renters. Both Washington County and the State of Oregon received federal emergency rental assistance funding to help people economically impacted by the pandemic to make their rental payments. Thanks to Senate Bill 278, tenants have 60 days in eviction protection when they demonstrate to their landlord that they have applied for rental assistance. This 60-day clock is not based on the eviction notice and the date that's presented, but rather the tenant's action of demonstrating to the landlord that they have applied for assistance. Community action has worked proactively to create a partnership with the Oregon Law Center and Unite Oregon to monitor the court dockets for eviction-related cases, as well as to station staff at the courts to help people both when they appear and even prior to their appearance. Next slide, please. There is currently safe harbor through February 2022 for any past due rent that is in arrears as of March 2020 through June 30th of 2021. So again, any rental arrears through June 30th of 2021 does not have to be paid back until February of 2022. But as of July 1st, rent is now due and payable as normal. If the rent is not paid, a landlord can issue a 10-day notice for non-payment, and the provisions on what the tenant must do are included in the notice. The tenant has 10 days to either pay their rent or to provide proof that they have applied for the rental assistance to avoid the eviction filing. When the tenant supplies proof that they have applied for rental assistance, they have that 60 days of protection until the landlord may file court for eviction. As you know, the eviction process is a legal process. It is a lot more complicated than what's on that slide, but this slide gives you some idea of how the protection comes into play. Next slide, please. So Washington County and the State of Oregon both have emergency rental assistance programs. Though they are meeting the same need, the county and the state funds are administered completely separately. In Washington County, they're administered by the Office of Community Development, and in the State of Oregon, they are administered by Oregon Housing and Community Services. Both entities received their ERA funding under the Consolidated Appropriations Act that was passed in December of 2020, as well as from the American Rescue Plan Act that was passed in March of 2021. The State of Oregon funded all of the Community Action Network, while Washington County has funded community action locally for this work. Both the county and the state use similar decision-making in selecting community action for the ERA I funds, ERA I funds being those that were passed under the Consolidated Appropriations Act in December. The decision-making was based on streamlining administrative burden, especially for a new federal program where the guidance was evolving, ensuring that there were systems to avoid the possibility of duplication of federal benefit, which was very much a compliance area for all of the pandemic-related funds, and then running a complex federal program through an agency that had the federally compliant systems, again, in light of a program that was evolving even as we were ramping up. Community action is currently tracking progress under both of those programs. The agency has risen to the challenge under the pandemic in delivering over $30 million since March of 2020, which includes ramping up to 30 staff people under the rental assistance programs. And they are also now working with the Public Health Institute with contact tracers to augment their boots on the ground. The state agency has also brought into the process for assistance a private contracting firm to assist in processing applications. Next slide, please. So both the state and the county must obligate 65% of their funding by September 30th. Statewide, 17% of the state's ERA programs have reached households, so that's paid or expended. And in Washington County, 17% of our local funds have also reached households. So again, that's paid and expended. Under, obviously, expenditure is equal to cash dispersment or an actual payment. Obligation is a commitment for the use of the funds or a contract commitment. The definition of obligation is based on 2 CFR Part 200, or the Uniform Administrative Requirements, CARES Act, and also American Rescue Act definitions under U.S. Treasury. HUD federal programs that define both obligated and expenditure, and we obtained county councils' opinion on those definitions as well. Next slide. You may have heard of a letter sent by the State of Oregon, Oregon Housing and Community Services, on September 7th to its Community Action Network regarding a reallocation of the state ERA funds. This reallocation effort was aimed at helping regions with higher-than-anticipated needs. Washington County is not impacted or affected by the state's policy shift to reallocate funding. This reallocation may actually result in additional money that comes into the tri-county metro region, because this is where the need appears to be highest based on the number of applications in the system. Next slide, please. So again, I wanted to again make a distinction between ERA I and ERA II. Washington County is receiving federal funds under two dispersments. The first, the Consolidated Appropriations Act passed in December, we refer to that as ERA I, and the direct allocation that has come to Washington County is just under $18 million. The second allocation that is being awarded to Washington County is through the American Rescue Plan passed in March, and we have received 40% of that funding. We will receive the remaining portion of that funding when we have allocated 75% of our first and second allocation. Next slide. So this is a snapshot of the county's program specifically. Within Washington County, we have had 913 applications touched by a person. Those are the applications in process. So that includes 129 applications that are in the initial review stages, so being assisted by an application processor. 157 are currently in the final review stage, so those are being looked at by an approver for compliance reasons, and then the request for payment is made. 627 have been fully paid out. These 913 applications may have come from a number of different pathways to our local community action agency. So they could have come through the state's new online ALIDA system, which currently reflects about 4,800 applications. They also can come through the partnership that Community Action has with culturally-specific agencies. They could come through Community Action's online portal, through the staff that are located at the Hawthorne Clinic, the Family Justice Center, the Department of Human Services, and the Evictions Court. And it's important to remember, too, that this is a snapshot of the Washington County program. So Community Action is also administering the state's program. So while it may not be a one-for-one ratio, you can assume that there is a similar set of processing numbers for the state program as well.
Jenny?
Yes.
Can you explain to me what the percentages are? I'm missing something here.
Yes, thank you, and my apologies for not pointing that out. So the percentages are based on that 4,800 that's in the state system. And so that was to give you a better ability to see kind of where things are relative to that larger pool of applications that is yet to be processed. There are applications coming in through those other pathways, but they are a smaller Okay, next slide, please. In terms of the scope of the problem, this slide will show you the impact to our community members of color. When we compare the racial demographics of our overall population with the demographics of our applicants, we can see that the evidence of disproportionate pandemic impact and the disproportionate need for assistance. Racial groups marginalized prior to the pandemic are disproportionately in need of the emergency rental assistance. For example, the proportion of Hispanic and Latino applicants for rental assistance is well over double the proportion of Hispanic and Latino community members in the county The proportion of Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander community members applying for rental assistance is actually triple the proportion of the population in the county overall. And similarly, the trend is nearly triple for the Black population. Meanwhile, if you look at the white population, that is nearly half of the county's population overall. Next slide. So again, continuing on the scope of the problem, 17% of available funds have been distributed to households. Approximately 2,300 households are waiting for any level of assistance. So they are essentially waiting behind 2,500 that are in some form of review, application review. So they are essentially waiting behind 2,500 that are in some form of review, application review. The average day from submission to payment is 65 days. Some may be processed much more quickly than that. Some may be processed more slowly than that. And often, the variable is documentation. And we will talk a little bit later about some flexibilities that U.S. Treasury has provided that should actually address some of this, since that variable is about documentation. And then lastly, as the prior slides show, there are racial disparities. Two times the proportion of Latino applicants and three times the proportion of Black and Pacific Islander applicants. Next slide. From a service delivery perspective, Community Action is following complex Treasury guidance in balancing the federal compliance needs with getting funds out the door. Processing the applications is careful and methodical. Community Action has the funds. There is a potential to be able to assist landlords, even those landlords that have tens of thousands of dollars of arrearsages. It is a complex federal program. It is far more complex than the coronavirus relief funds. We want and need Community Action to be a good steward of federal funds, especially in that the Treasury guidance is evolving as we're implementing. Community Action is also adapting to a new software system implemented by the state in May. And the new system has many great attributes, like the ability to see the whole picture of need. So we did not have that ability to view the whole picture of need prior to this new system. The new software system, it helps to maintain Community Action's system of accountability, which is important to them. And it also helps them to maintain a large volume of applications. But there are also inherent challenges in a new system that is adapting to and growing to a new system like this software. Next slide, please. From the service delivery perspective, Community Action is processing a huge volume of applications. They are pushing to provide emergency rent assistance as quickly as they can. The county has met the critical milestone that U.S. Treasury sets of 65% obligated of the ERA I funding. But we do acknowledge that we need to expend and expend faster. Community Action is working with culturally-specific community organizations. There is a large variety or variation in people's education level across the scope of Community Action's applications. And there is a variety of skill set in technological skill. So some people, it may be very intuitive to access the state's online database. For other people, they need more one-on-one help. And so that staffed-client relationship is critical. That human connection takes time. And that partnership with the culturally-specific agencies has been just really so instrumental to reaching our community members. Next slide, please. From the household perspective, there's just a lot of uncertainty in application outcome and long waiting times causing stress. So people are not aware of when payments will actually be made. And the wait times, as we've looked at before, are long. So when faced with months of past due rent, financial insecurity, and possible housing insecurity, the stress is very high. Stress from housing insecurity impacts long-term mental and physical health. Physiological problems, psychological problems, and chronic illness are outcomes of prolonged stress. And most importantly, these impacts are felt disproportionately by communities of color. First, the pandemic impacts themselves. The financial insecurity are disproportionate. And then on top of that, the impacts of long-waiting periods for rental relief are added disproportionately to communities of color. Next slide, please. Stress from housing insecurity impacts child development as well. The stress of facing housing insecurity not only impacts the caregiver's health, but also that of the child. Negative impacts in child development, as well as the long-term outcomes, are associated with housing insecurity. Culturally-specific, community-based organizations are currently only funded to help people apply for assistance. They're not funded to actually process the applications and making the payments. And this can cause confusion and frustration for the applicants who are experiencing the delay as they aren't sure, they don't realize that the community-based organizations aren't managing the payment side of the program. An expanded role in this critical service delivery system is needed. Community-based organizations are dipping into their own funding to help families work through the delays in the rental assistance payment. This has been a role that this community-based organizations have played throughout the pandemic in a variety of other valuable services. Next slide. Fear of eviction on their record makes people self-evict when noticed. So when they're faced with an eviction notice, many families may simply leave. The long-term financial impact of an eviction on someone's record is too great for someone to wait for the rental assistance. There's also a fear of government as a barrier to applying. So a fear of interacting with or providing information to the government may prevent many people from applying. Many of these people need more specific hands-on support to apply. There may be fear and stigma in being a public charge. There's a fear in maybe not being able to provide a social security number, and other concerns are prevalent. Next slide. So to adapt to the challenges, Washington County has reassigned five contact tracing staff to help process emergency rental assistance applications on behalf of Community Action. So they've kind of been added to the boots on the ground for that agency in addition to Community Action's current capacity at 30 positions. The state of Oregon has hired a private contracted firm to assist all of the Community Action agencies with processing applications. But obviously, a focus on the metro region where the number of applications is very, very high. Next slide. Staff actions that are currently underway for consideration and just being discussed internally by staff is passing funds through to culturally-specific agencies to allow them to process applications from start to finish. Recruiting additional staff either through the Public Health Institute or possibly just through the county itself. And then implementing the flexibilities allowed by U.S. Treasury in recent guidance that has come out. And so one of those flexibilities is the ability to, if a tenant does not immediately have documentation, you can move forward with a self-attestation of income. And that should help speed up the timelines significantly. Next slide. And so with that, I will turn the presentation back over to Ms. Angie. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Proctor, and thank you for the thorough overview of really a complicated subject to unravel. So the board policy discussion item in front of you is a discussion to adopt an ordinance to extend the 60-day eviction protection for emergency rental assistance applicants to 90-day period. If the board recalls a data point that Ms. Proctor had illustrated, was the average time to process an application is 65 days from start. So that is beyond the current 60-day window. So the 90-day window could help provide both the landlord as well as the tenant funds to prevent eviction. Next slide, please. It is important to note that the board would be acting as the Board of Commissioners, and this action would not be under the local health authority. Per the charter, the ordinance would only apply in unincorporated areas of the county. I do want to share some data just as far as our rental units in the county. 40% of all rental housing in Washington County is in unincorporated areas. 26% is in Beaverton, 21% Hillsborough. Almost a quarter of a million of the residents that live in Washington County, more than a third are renting. So I wanted to lift that up that wasn't on the slide, but I do think it's an important context as far as the volume of renters. For your awareness, Washington County cities that could adopt similar ordinances are listed on the screen. The cities with asterisks relate to just a portion of the community that is within Washington County. This policy option could be adopted as an emergency, which would require all members in attendance to vote in favor of the ordinance. Or we could take a standard ordinance route with first reading today and then move to second reading. Next slide, please. And so this slide just shows what an emergency ordinance process would be, which if the board decides to take that action today, it would be effective immediately, or the standard ordinance route. As was mentioned earlier in today's meeting, I have shared this information with all of the city managers. And I am meeting with them tomorrow and can share an update of the board discussion from today. Next slide. So here are some challenges and opportunities that we've identified. The challenge of having an ordinance that is not county-wide, it could be a possible administrative burden for Community Action. It could be confusion for landlords who own property in incorporated and unincorporated areas of the county. And it could possibly cause some confusion for tenants. The opportunities, more Washington County households would be protected from eviction, mental and physical health value in keeping more people housed. And the ordinance would promote racial equity in unincorporated Washington County due to the disproportionate amount of renters who are people of color. Next slide. So with this, I will leave it to board discussion. We're happy to answer any questions that the board may have in your discussion of a 90-day ordinance for the benefit of applicants for the emergency assistance relief program.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. I think it's pretty clear that what we're being asked to do is to just extend this applicable time period and additional 30 days for a total of 90 days. But I want to make sure that we have addressed all commissioner questions, as well as comments and potential discussion on a motion. So Commissioner Willie, go ahead.
Yes, just for clarification, Tanya, you used the term "applied." So I'm assuming, what if they're not accepted? Does this then, I guess if they weren't accepted, so they overall didn't qualify for this, would they then be subject to immediate eviction? I mean, do we have a percentage that says of the people that applied, 100% of them were accepted, or can they get rejected?
They can get rejected if they don't meet the application criteria. And then, yes, the eviction process would start. But in the previous slide, and I apologize if I don't have my printout with the page numbers, but the tenant would provide the application proof of verification to the landlord. So there is that communication network at that point. If they don't receive payment, yes, then the eviction proceedings would proceed. What we can indicate from what we know from the applicants, those that are applying do meet the need and the relief program guidelines.
Okay, and then they're applying for rental assistance. So are they applying for 60 days of rental assistance? And if we give them an extra 30, are they applying for 90 days or just 60 days they're applying for, or how does that work?
No, Jenny, can you provide, again, how the timelines work for the program?
Yes, so under the Emergency Rental Assistance I guidelines, a tenant is eligible for 12 months of arrearsages and three months of projected rent. Or if they don't need 12 months of arrearsages, maybe they need six months of arrearsages, then they are eligible for projected rent or forward rent as needed for a maximum amount of rent assistance of 15 months.
Okay, I think you went over that in the slide presentation. I missed that part of it, of that timeline. So thank you, thank you for clarifying that. So, yeah, okay. So I'm assuming chair at some point in time, as soon as we finish our discussion, you're going to ask if we want to make this an emergency.
After everyone has had the opportunity to ask questions, you bet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other commissioners' questions? Commissioner Trese?
Thank you, I have a question, first of all, for Mr. Carr. I know that the emergency ordinance requires a unanimous vote. I don't believe that Commissioner Rogers is with us right now. Would that unanimous vote have to, what is the situation there?
I believe it does. The charter says that it doesn't require a unanimous vote if the emergency keeps one of the members from being present. But since the emergency isn't keeping Commissioner Rogers from being present, I still think his vote would be required, and he is deemed to be present for the purpose of counting the votes.
He's not currently present in the meeting is the point.
Right.
He's only turned his camera off while he's gone to his personal appointment.
But the rule is that the thing that keeps you from the meeting has to be the emergency itself. So what the charter says is, and I can pull it up later, charter says is that it requires a unanimous vote of all of those present, unless one or more of the members can't attend because of the emergency. It contemplates a thing like a flood where someone couldn't get there and you needed to take emergency action.
But he's currently not present is what she's trying to point out. So it's unanimous if those present.
Yeah, no, it's unanimous. I'll go back and get the exact language. I do not think that you can pass it without all five of you.
Okay, thank you, that answers my first, my question. But I have a comment to make, and I'd appreciate just clarification on that, Mr. Carr. This issue, the bottom line here is what we're doing. We've got a situation that is so complicated, but we've got money that we can't get out of the door because of a series of issues. The software problem, the resource problem, there's a number of issues. But what I want to underscore to all of us here is the degree of problem this is creating for the people that are in this situation. I just received a message from an individual who's right in the middle of this. And Jenny, I appreciate your presentation, and I appreciate the fact that you outlined what the stressors are in relationship to not knowing what your status is in terms of an eviction. And we haven't done, it's very difficult for those that are in this situation just by saying that it takes us 65 days to go through this, and our limit is 60 days. If I were in that situation, I'd be sweating bullets, frankly. So I'm just pointing out that I So I'm just pointing out that I recognize that this is a difficult decision from an emergency standpoint. I recognize that it's a difficult situation from the standpoint that we are only affecting unincorporated Washington County. But I really want to underscore the magnitude of this problem and make sure that all of the commissioners understand that we have a large percentage of people who are affected, yes. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr, I was about to call you Commissioner Carr.
So, I'm reading from Section 50 Sub F in the Charter. It says that an emergency ordinance may be enacted upon introduction in one reading and public hearing, provided that it is introduced and approved unanimously to the board. Or, in the event that the emergency precludes one or more commissioners from voting, a unanimous approval of those present. So, it's unanimous unless the emergency precludes someone from attending, then it's those present. But the phrase "those present" is not in the initial unanimity requirement.
So let's hope Commissioner Rogers makes it back, or not. Commissioner Phi, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Chair Harrington. Did you say Commissioner Phi?
Do you have any questions?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any questions right now before we work on any motions and discussion?
Yeah, I have maybe two small questions, and then we can move on. Jenny, one of your slides had the 13%, and then another one said 17%. I was wondering what the difference between those two.
I believe I know what that is, but let me just check real quickly as I look back at those slides. I believe that one is based, the 17% is based on the percentage of funds that have been distributed. The 13% was based on the percentage of applications, whatever the variable was at that point, in process.
Okay, and then the other question I had, and I was just reflecting here, back in the contact tracing time, where we had community, culturally specific communities, organizations, culturally specific organizations, CBOs, that were doing some resource coordination and actually giving some of the resources, helping with mortgage, or rent, or food, or paying the utilities. It sounds like this is in the same process, so is there any specific funds that's allocated to culturally specific organizations to also partake in this?
So currently, there are not, the Public Health Institute contract that we were able to work into, thank you to Health and Human Services, is utilizing that group of staff, who, that's why that's been a natural fit for that staff, because they have been used to working with households with those other forms of assistance. So for them to move into this work has been really a wonderful alignment. At this current time, we don't have specific contracts with culturally specific agencies, and so that is one of the actions that we talked about on one of the slides about our work moving forward.
Okay.
Commissioner Phi, let me add to that. So Community Action is directly working with culturally specific organizations to get applications in the door. We think there's an opportunity to expand that effort. And so, coming up this week, we are going to invite a facilitated conversation with Community Action Network, also our culturally specific organizations to kind of have a problem-solving conversation, like, how can we work together to get more applications in the door and options to help with the processing time as well?
Yeah, I think, just a quick clarification for you, Jenny, like, since I was involved in the contact tracing piece, OPHI were doing contact tracing, and then some hiring the staff to coordinate the resources. But we had culturally specific organizations that we would send people to because they spoke and understood the culture. So we would funnel people who spoke either Spanish, or Japanese, Chinese, any of the languages that our community speak. We would send them, so it sounds like that specific structure doesn't exist, but it sounds like Tanya is saying there's a potential opportunity to create that. Because that program actually worked, that process worked. And if it already exists, yeah, I support going that direction. And then the other question I had for Tom, and I was smiling, is that weren't COVID, is it COVID, the emergency?
So, Commissioner Rogers is out because of COVID, then would we need a unanimous? He's not sick, he has to go get a COVID test for a medical procedure. So, but that's okay, it somewhat relates to the questions I have. So I have two questions. The first is, to verify, I think I have it right, but you talked about how through the funds, someone can apply for up to 15 months of rental assistance, you know, through the combination of arrears as well as projected. So, I just want to verify that this is for full payment to the landlords, as opposed to a discounted payment, correct?
That is correct. The full payment of rental arrearsages and also utility costs, whether they are through the landlord or whether they are billed as a third party.
Terrific, terrific. So, the point is, is it's, for at least some, it's in the best interest of the landlord that the applicants are able to secure this funding, because they're going to get more money out of this than potentially they would if folks self-evict or potentially even have to go to eviction court, which has further delay in payment schedules and all that jazz. My second question is to timelines. So in looking at the agenda topic sheet, on the second page, well, actually, the third page of the topic sheet, third paragraph begins, "The State Eviction Moratorium ended June 30th, 2021. And during the alleged session, Senate Bill 278 provided for the protections for a 60-day period for which the tenant cannot be evicted." So I assume that covered the months of July and August?
No.
So what I'm trying to get at, my ultimate question is, could someone please cover the timeline for us? Because I want to find out if we don't have unanimity for an emergency ordinance, the proposed timeline is then a first reading and a public hearing on October 5th, and then to potentially, we could adopt it on that date, October 5th, but it wouldn't be effective until November 4th. And so I'm wondering, you had a slide that talked about the different paths, but what it doesn't answer is the question of, is there a difference in the timeline for potential coverage?
So, how I would answer that is going back to the slide that talks about the 60-day clock of that protection and when it starts. And so really, it will be different for every household. Someone may receive the, an eviction notice from a landlord in August. Maybe the landlord didn't provide an eviction notice in July because the landlord is also hoping for, to receive payment. Maybe the landlord provides the notice in August, then the tenant says, well, I applied for assistance on August 16th. That's when the 60-day clock kicks in. And so you're counting from August 16th, 60 days out currently, 90 days out if this were to be enacted. And so for every household, that timeline will be different.
Will we end up with zero people affected by the difference in dates? Or is there possibly one or more?
I think that there's benefit, and I apologize if I'm misunderstanding the question, but I think there's benefit in this, that each household that receives an eviction notice, well then, if this were enacted, they would have 90 days to allow this payment to be made, but the clock will start on a different day. So there will be benefit to many households that live in this geography, the unincorporated part. And we will have to assess every household as to where, what jurisdiction they live in and what date they demonstrated to the landlord they applied for assistance.
So it'll only make the situation worse, more complicated if we're not unanimous? Okay.
Chair Harrington, I'm going to answer this directly. Staff recommendation is that the board adopt it by emergency. And the reason for that is due to our partnership and relationship with Oregon Law Center, Community Action. They watch the eviction proceedings and can help try to step in. However, that is just one intervention, and focusing more on the application process and getting these applications through the process is a better long-term solution. And if the board feels more comfortable working through a standard process, of course, we can work with that, but the staff recommendation is adoption by emergency.
Okay, all righty. Okay, welcome back, Commissioner Rogers. We're just still at the stage of going through questions on the presentation. We haven't asked for, or I haven't asked for a motion yet. So do you have any questions on the presentation that you wanted to ask of staff?
Well, thank you, I apologize, I had to run over and get some testing and just came right back. But having missed all of the presentation, I can only go from what I've read. And what I, I'm reading correctly is that small landlords, which many of them are going to be made whole, they're not going to have another 30 days of loss. So that part, I understood, if that's correct. It also looks like we've got a bit of homework to be doing, or process design to be doing to get some funds out. I detected that in what was happening. The only other issue or comment that I had is that they, is I understand the tenant would have to apply. I don't know what that process looks like. It's kind of like people who say, well, I kind of applied for college, but I didn't quite show up and I didn't quite get too serious about it. What is the application process? Because you want to help people who are serious about getting help, not just applying to get deferral. Does that make sense?
Yes, so there's multiple pathways for assistance, one of which is the statewide software program called ALIDA, where someone can apply directly into that system. And it will, it will give them kind of a stamped acknowledgement of their application. So that stamped acknowledgement or email can be shown to the landlord. If the, if a client goes through any of the other pathways through the culturally specific agencies, through Community Action's online portal, through, at the eviction court itself, they will be given some form of documentation that they then will show their landlord.
Two follow-up questions, then. Is, do they have to be, can anybody apply even if they don't have the specific need that's going to be required? So somebody just said, well, I'll apply, what the heck? I get to defer another month's rent, so it's not really a serious application. So that's the first question, I have another one right after that.
Anyone can apply, and then the role of Community Action is to vet the application packet. And so they have application processors who go through the packet thoroughly. They make sure the documentation is there, the documentation from the landlord, documentation of income. And then they have staff who review that for compliance. So it is not approved if the person is not eligible.
But I get all that, and I know that they're very good at what they do. But if somebody just applied knowing that they probably weren't going to, do they get the extension, and does that present a problem to the landlord? So that they're saying, well, there's this application out there, it's never going to be approved because they don't meet any of the criteria. Is there, I'm just looking, I guess it's my counting mind, is there any problems that were being created by somebody simply saying, oh, I'll apply to get another 30 days, and I can do whatever I want to in that 30 days? My second question, by the way, what do you think about that is, is what if somebody says, you know, I'm really, because of my circumstances, I'm not really attuned, maybe I don't even have access to computer broadband or any other technology, and they apply in the, you know, a month from now? Is that extending it further out, or how does all that work? And I apologize going over these, these are just things I picked up.
So I do think that, I mean, yes, so anyone could apply, and if they showed that receipt to the landlord, then the landlord is under a legal obligation to wait 60 days. And so there would be a delay for the landlord in getting payment. So that could happen. And so, does that answer your question?
It does, I just know a lot of small landlords, and they would have a concern saying, gee, if somebody is actually in need and they're qualified, great, I mean, but if they're just frivolous. And I know, unless you've been in that business, there's a lot of people who take advantage of situations and do a lot of damage to properties, or really, they have grow facilities. I mean, you say, well, really? Yeah, they have grow facilities, they have, you know, a lot of actions that are not particularly liked by the other tenants, you know, maybe they're loud. So I just want to make certain we don't have problem children that are saying, aha, there's another hook. So if you're telling me not, I mean, I'm fine with the basic program, I'm just looking at the problem. So what happens if you apply late? How long do you have to apply, and how long does that take you out?
Yeah, it's, how long does this program last? I mean, at what point are applications no longer accepted? I think is a different way of asking
That's right.
the question that Commissioner Rogers is posing.
Right, well, the Emergency Rental Assistance 1 dollars must be fully expended by September 30th of 2022. And the Emergency Rental Assistance 2 dollars have a much longer timeframe, so that is September of 2025. And I would, just to circle back to Commissioner Rogers' question, you know, over many years of working with Community Action on these programs, the subject does come up at times as to how often people who are not eligible might try to come into the system. And really, what Community Action has acknowledged over time is that very few people try to do that, that the people that are coming in really are the people that need it, that they know who Community Action is. And as Tanya mentioned earlier, the partnerships that the partnerships that Community Action has with our culturally specific agencies, the clients that those agencies serve know where to reach them as well.
I think I'm done, but that that doesn't sound good out to twenty three or twenty four. I mean, that's a long, long time.
So let me add.
Yeah, please, okay, and I'll get off here.
So Senate Bill two seventy eight, which puts the sixty day window in place, sun sets on March second, two thousand and twenty two.
So people can apply. Now I'm really confused. There's the time period for which people can apply. And then, and I'm wondering, since this sun sets March of two thousand and twenty two, how the sixty days, so the sixty days applies to the protection period on an eviction notice. Is that right?
It it apply it to your protection if you've applied for the eviction relief funds.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So if a landlord has not applied or proceeded with an eviction notice, people could enter into this program until March second of two thousand and twenty two. Right? Because what I heard earlier is the sixty day clock starts once you've applied.
So people can apply for this program as long as the funds are there and the program exists. The March twenty second deadline is when all past arrears are due. So we really want to focus between now and March twenty two to make sure we get all the arrears paid as possible. But even after March twenty two, someone who hasn't been evicted yet, but now they receive an eviction notice on May first of twenty two, they have, they would still have protection of sixty days currently.
Okay.
Until until that until that Senate Bill two seventy eight deadline is over. And I I don't off the top of my head know that piece.
That's what Ms. Angie just said was March second of two thousand and twenty two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So what I was, this relates to one of the questions that I asked earlier about the the timing and the gap between a unanimous decision. And then if it's not unanimous, the October fifth effective in November timeframe. I wasn't looking for something beyond thirty days, right? I'm looking for a reasonable timeframe because I don't want to continue complicating landlords' lives. Right, as Commissioner Rogers mentioned, there are a lot of small landlords. So that's where it, the timelines still aren't a hundred percent clear to me of how this lines up. But the reason why I'm still uncomfortable with my own confusion is that it's an opportunity to keep landlords whole. In addition, right, to helping our community members stay housed and reduce stress on them. So I'll just leave it at that. I don't currently, it isn't clear in my mind that if we're not unanimous and we have to go with the other method, what the the negative impact will be. But I I certainly understand the upside contribution. So those are, I I'm done with questions. Are there any other questions that commissioners have? Okay, all righty then. We have two different paths for decision making. Why don't we try the first path, which is the one recommended to us by our staff, which would involve, gosh, I have to make sure, a motion to adopt emergency Washington County Ordinance eight eight zero to extend the sixty day tenant protection period in Senate Bill two seventy eight, two thousand and twenty one to ninety days. Is there such a motion? A motion from Commissioner Trese, is there a second? There's a second from Commissioner Phi. I'd like to open the table for discussion to see if there's any discussion before we take a vote. Does anyone want to make any comments? Commissioner Trese, your mic is on. Did you want to say anything? No, okay. So Clerk Moss, could you please take the roll call vote?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers? Get that as a verbal. Commissioner Rogers? Thank you. Commissioner Phi? Vice Chair Trese?
Yes.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Commissioners, I think we went into this with eyes wide open and ears wide open. I really appreciate your diligence and that of staff to make sure that we know what we were being asked to consider and that we understand that. So we have taken care of the three items of action today. The next thing on our agenda is public communication. Our second opportunity of that. Clerk Moss, I don't know if we have the same people signed up.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one that wasn't online for the two minutes. So we'll allow him at the five minutes, and this will be the only one that we're aware of. Mr. Ballas, can you hear us? Can you unmute, Mark?
Oh, I thought you said bye, daylight. Yes, I am unmuted.
All right, please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Washington County Commissioners, please return to a constitutional form of government. We have been lied to and placed into a benevolent predatory form of martial law federally since March eighteen sixty one through one form of martial law or another. This is until we know that Portland is a subdivision of Multnomah County, is a subdivision of the United States of Oregon, is a subdivision of the defunct United States Incorporated. That is not a constitutional form of government, we are guaranteed. The encochement upon our unalienable rights has caused the people like the proverbial frog sitting in a pan of water being heated to jump out and do something about the dilemma rather than become cooked. Regarding the Second Amendment, public servants, e.g., civil servants, e.g., government servants, do not have the authority to infringe on the right of the people on Oregon to conceal carry. We, the people, already have the Second Amendment. No state shall convert a liberty into a license and charge a fee therefore. Murdoch versus Pennsylvania, three one nine, U.S. one oh five. It applies to concealed carry licensing fees charged by the local sheriff. If the state converts a right into a privilege, the citizen can ignore the license fee and engage in the right with impunity. Sudelsworth versus City of Birmingham, Alabama, three seven three, U.S. two six two. However, the judges, courts, juries will convict anyway. Knowingly obstructing the administration of justice in and of itself is malfeasance in public office. Whether it is done with malice of forethought or unwittingly out of ignorance, it it is to thwart the will of the people. It is to promote a hidden agenda that is wholly antithetical and diametrically opposed to the Constitution and Bill of Rights. Whenever public servants falsely view themselves as governing officials backed by bar attorneys and corrupt activist judges, the more damage is done to the republic. I reiterate, knowingly obstructing the administration of justice is of and in itself malfeasance of public office. Further, in addition, this applies to individuals and organizations of individuals receiving hidden compensation that buys their disloyalty to the cause of we, the people, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights. I yield.
Thank you, Mark. And Madam Chair, that concludes the public testimony for today. Mr. Carr?
Mr. Carr, please.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I apologize. The emergency provision requires a public hearing if you pass on one ordinance, on one reading, and I apologize. I recommend that the chair open a public hearing and see if there's anyone who's interested in testifying. And then as a matter of caution, redo the vote after the public hearing.
Yes, thank you. We had such an extensive staff presentation, question session, discussion that I missed that, so my apologies. So we're going to go back to the ordinance. Whoops, let me get the right sheet of paper out here. Ordinance number eight eight zero. I'd like to open a public hearing. Oh, did we need to read that ordinance by title only?
Let's do that.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have a motion to read?
I have a question, Madam Chair, of Mr. Carr. That's a little unusual procedure. What we've always done in the past is we voted to reconsider that. That and then we can go in. So I am, can we just go into another meeting and then we have another vote? And then we have one, then we have another? Because I I would move that we reconsider that if that's appropriate.
That is the way to do it. Although the argument would be that without the public hearing, the vote wasn't valid. So you need to do the vote again. So because the charter requires a vote. So if you'd allow me to read it, read it by title only, if there is a vote, do so.
I first need to ask for a motion to read ordinance number eight eight zero by title only. We have a motion from Commissioner Trese, a second from Commissioner Phi. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion, excuse me, carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr, could you please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Chair. Ordinance number eight eight zero, an emergency ordinance extending the sixty day protection period in Senate Bill two seventy eight, open for end two thousand and twenty one, closed for end to ninety days.
Thank you. I'd like to open a public hearing on ordinance number eight eight zero. We've already had the staff report. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone wishing? Could you check to see if there's anyone wishing to testify on this matter?
Yes, I can, Madam Chair. Would anyone in our attendees list, please raise your hand if you'd like to provide testimony on this emergency ordinance eight eighty? Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And with that, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance eight eight zero? Motion from Commissioner Trese, is there a second? Second from Commissioner Willie. Is there any discussion or comments before we call the roll? Seeing none, Clerk Moss, could you take the roll call vote, please?
Yes, I can, Madam Chair. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Willie?
Aye.
Commissioner Phi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Trese?
Yes.
Chair Harrington?
Thank you. The ordinance passes unanimously, five to zero. I hope I closed the public hearing appropriately. I think I did. I did. Okay, great. All right. So we've had our second public comment period. The next item on the agenda is board announcements true to form for for meetings coming up. Next Tuesday, September twenty eighth, we'll have our work session starting at two in the afternoon, board meeting at six thirty P.M. And then we're into the month of October already. Holy jamoly. Tuesday, October fifth, we have a work session at eight thirty in the morning, board meeting at ten, and then proceeding back into work session. We have a round table on October seventh. Then the next week, the twelfth, Tuesday, our work session starts at eight thirty. The following week, we have a pretty intense week as we will convene as the Clean Water Services Board of Directors for three days of virtual trainings with WEF Tech and other trainings with Clean Water Services. That will be on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. On Tuesday, October nineteenth, we'll have a work session that starts at eight thirty, pause for a board meeting at ten, then work session again. And then we'll round out the end of the month with an afternoon work session and an evening board meeting at six thirty on Tuesday, October twenty sixth, which does not coincide with Halloween this year. Are there any other board announcements? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn, Ms. Angie?
Oh, I thought you were going to maybe say any leadership update, so.
Are there any leadership updates?
I just wanted to do, just to check in on timing. We've gone, some days we go faster through agenda items and some days it takes much longer. Today is on the longer side. This afternoon, we do have our outside speaker ready to start on habitat conservation. And then we have the vaccination update. Just wanting to be thoughtful about the board's time. The homeless encampment program update, we're about two and a half, three months in to that pilot program. So this was just an update. We could push that out. I just want to be reflective of the board's time. And we're already close to three quarters of full day of board meeting.
I have a hard stop at five. Yeah, I have I have one at quarter till five.
My recommendation would be that, you know, the old saying that the mine can only endure what the bottom can endure. And that's a, it's a long day. If you want fresh mines who are going to be thoughtful, I I would say defer one of them. If you don't and you just want us to look at you with a glaze, that's okay to, I guess.
With that, I would ask that we do defer the encampment program update because we really would like to hear from the board because we know that you've received constituent feedback and so would really like it to be a thoughtful discussion.
Okay. So that will be put off to another date and we'll still try to get through both the vaccination update and the habitat conservation plan presentation. What what time are our outside presenters?
He, they are ready. However, it's known that we may need a five to ten minute break between the meetings.
Yeah, yeah, yep, okay. All righty, before we adjourn this meeting and reconvene in work session, how long of a break would you folks like? At least five minutes for sure. Do you need ten? I can't read lips, sorry.
Until three o'clock.
Are you guys okay with that? Three o'clock? Okay, great. So do we have a motion to adjourn the board meeting? Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Second from Commissioner Trese. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. See you at three o'clock on the other link for the work session. Thank you, at three o'clock.